Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. We've got a big agenda. It's great to see every, all the, all the folks here, and we've got a very special event, some events planned. With that, though, Council President, you have a motion.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you very much, Mayor. I move to amend tonight's agenda to add item E, therapeutic courts inter-agency agreement under council business.
Is that 9E?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 9E.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second to add item 9E to the agenda for therapeutic court inter-agency agreement. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the item's added. All right, and now, we're on to awards and recognitions. Chief Wong. Yes.
Recording in progress.
All right, let's, let's do that again. Take two. All right. All right, chief.
All right, good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, and members of the council. This evening, we like to publicly recognize and celebrate the promotion and appointment of six outstanding individuals. I am honored, gives me great pleasure to promote these exceptional individuals and recognize them for their unwavering commitment and their dedication to our community for many years. Promotions are one of the most critical decisions chiefs make in their careers. Supervising and leading police officers, enormous responsibility, and deciding who will make complex, important decisions that occur in real time is a significant undertaking. One key ingredient to the Federalway Police Department's success has been promoting the right individuals. These individuals have the necessary leadership skills and abilities and embody the, our agency's core values. They've earned this recognition and promotion. Mayor Farrell will administer the oath of office this evening. First, we'll have Commander Casey Jones. He's being promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief. Casey has been a police officer for thirty years. Casey worked for the Muckelteo Police Department for two years before joining the Federalway Police Department in nineteen ninety-six as a lateral experienced police officer. Casey is a founding member of this agency and worked first day of patrol shift when we took over police services from the King County Sheriff's Office. Casey's responsible for several firsts in our agency. On the first day our agency took over police services in October of nineteen ninety-six, Casey was the first to make a traffic stop, issue a ticket, and make an arrest. Casey was also the first Federalway officer to be involved in a traffic collision when a driver from California slid into his patrol vehicle during a snowstorm. In two thousand and five, Casey was promoted to Lieutenant and spent the last ten years as a commander working various assignments. Casey's been providing dedicated service to our community for the past twenty-eight years. Throughout his career, Casey has consistently demonstrated leadership and initiative in driving positive change within our agency. For his early days as a field training officer, to his current role as a commander, Casey's been entrusted with increasingly challenging responsibilities. As a seasoned leader on the Valley SWAT team, Casey has honed in his ability to make critical decisions under pressure while fostering a culture of excellence and collaboration. Casey spent eight years as an officer on the SWAT team and another ten years as a commander. Most recently, he finished his last two-year assignment as the team's commander. As a commander, Casey has a proven record of solving problems raised by community stakeholders and leading by example so that other police supervisors and staff understand the importance of communication. Casey's notable professional achievements include playing a pivotal role in selecting our CAD system, spearheading initiatives for our new police substations, and successfully negotiating contracts and inter-local agreements, including significant partnership with the Humane Society and the Federalway Public Schools. Beyond Casey's professional endeavor, Casey lives in Federalway and is deeply committed to community service, volunteering extensively within our schools, youth sports organizations, neighborhood programs, and local charities. Casey is married to Renee, and they have two sons. Casey Junior is a U.S. Marine assigned to San Diego, couldn't make it here tonight, and, and Marshall, he's still in high school. Casey's academic accomplishments include graduating from the Federalway Advancing Leadership Program and the FBI National Academy. Casey has a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Washington State University and a Master's in Public Administration and Government Management from Keller Graduate School of Management. Please join me in congratulating Deputy Chief Casey Jones for this significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Still out there, stay out there, yeah, a little longer. His wife Renee will be pinning the badge this evening, and his son Marshall will be joining her. So Renee, please come on up for the badge pinning. And it's okay to hug, a short, quick peck is okay. Yes, in uniform. Next, we have Lieutenant Michael Coffey. He's being promoted to the rank of Commander. Michael's been a police officer for over eighteen years, serving as a Lieutenant, a detective, and a patrol officer. He began his law enforcement career with Federalway in January of two thousand and six. Since joining the department, Michael's worked as a patrol officer, detective, major crime scene team member, and emergency vehicle operator course instructor for the past twelve years. In two thousand and eleven, due to Michael's exceptional investigative skills, he was selected as a detective, assigned to the Criminal Investigation Section. Michael served on the Valley Independent Investigation Team for five years, tasked with investigating officer-involved shooting incidents. Michael's awarded the Detective of the Year in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. He received the Police Chief Commendation in two thousand and eighteen for his tireless and exceptional work to bring closure and arrest the four murders that occurred in Federalway community in two thousand and sixteen, three of which occurred within seventy-two hours. In two thousand and twenty-one, Michael was promoted to Lieutenant, assigned to the Patrol Division, where he led and supervised a patrol squad. As a Lieutenant, Michael's well-versed in daily patrol operations and led coordinated responses to critical incidents. In his last assignment as a Lieutenant, Mike was assigned to the Criminal Investigation Section, overseeing the daily operations of detectives assigned to investigate violent and persons' crimes. Michael has served as an exceptional leader and has risen to the occasion to serve as a great role model, providing support and expertise for the detectives. Please join me in congratulating Commander Michael Coffey for this significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Michael has several family members attending this evening. Michael's wife Michelle will be pinning the badge. Their two daughters, Megan and Madeline, are also here, and they're welcome to come up if they like for pinning the badge. So Michelle, come on up. Okay, next, we have Officer Josh McConnell. He's being promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. Josh has been a police officer for seventeen years. Josh began his law enforcement career with the Federalway Police Department in two thousand and seven. Josh has broad range of experience while serving in various assignments. He has worked as a patrol officer, a Special Operations Unit member, a School Resource Officer, Acting Patrol Lieutenant, and a Force Training Unit as a Firearms Instructor. Josh has also had collateral assignments in specialty units such as a Civil Disturbance Unit and the Valley SWAT Team. In addition to his work experience, Josh is deeply invested in the Federalway community. He has lived in Federalway with his wife and children since he began working for the city. Some of Josh's accomplishments are his work with the community. He consistently seeks opportunities to engage with the community in his commissioned officer role and personal life. Josh's academic accomplishments include graduating from Faith International University with a Bachelor's of Arts in Leadership and earning an EMT certification from Bates Technical College. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Josh McConnell for this significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Josh's wife Lori and their children Lucy, Evelyn, Cannon, please come on up for the badge pinning. Okay, it looks like just Lori. The kids are a little shy. Okay, next, we have Officer Blake Losfar. He's been appointed to the position of Corporal. Blake has sixteen years of law enforcement experience, last twelve years with the Federalway Police Department. Before joining the city of Federalway, Blake worked for the Maui Police Department. Blake has spent six years assigned to patrol, three years assigned to the Contract Services Unit, and the last assigned to the Special Operations Unit. As a member of the Special Operations Unit, Blake interacts daily with business owners, outreach programs, and community members. Blake consistently strives to address their concerns and seek favorable resolutions. Blake has developed and maintained a solid working relationship with business owners and managers throughout the city by making himself easily accessible through the open line of communication. Blake is proactive about projects and completes tasks in a timely fashion. He currently maintains a department's bicycle fleet. Blake is an exceptional work, has exceptional work ethic, and received a commendation for exceptional work in two thousand and twenty. Blake is well-liked and respected by his peers. Please join me in congratulating Corporal Blake Losfar for this significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Blake's wife Erica will be pinning on the badge this evening, and joined by their daughter Bella and also Dylan. And it looks like they're not coming up. Okay, congratulations. Next, we have Officer Zachariah Williams. He's being promoted to the position of Corporal. Zach has over five years of law enforcement experience, is a field training officer for the department, and positively contributes to the development of new officers. Before being hired in two thousand and nineteen, Zach served as a Corrections Officer with the Aberdeen Police Department. Zach demonstrates his leadership skills daily as a field training officer on calls for service and in shift briefing training sessions. During the department's annual awards ceremony, Zach received the recognition for most felony arrests by a patrol officer in two thousand and twenty-three. Zach is hard-working, reliable, detail-oriented officer with excellent communication skills. He is well-liked and respected among his peers. Zach is always helpful to his peers and willing to assist others on his squad. Zach serves on the Valley Civil Disturbance Unit. Please join me in congratulating Corporal Zach Williams for this significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Zach's fiancee Nicole will be pinning on the badge tonight. And Zach has quite a few family members here tonight, and Zach and Nicole are getting married on August tenth. Zach, I want you to know you're getting married because you have a gainful employment. You have a good job with good pension, okay? Next, we have Officer Chad Smith. He's been appointed to the position of Corporal. Chad has over seven years of law enforcement experience and worked two years with the Colorado Police Department. Chad also honorably served in the United States Army before joining the Federalway Police Department. During his time with the agency, Chad has served as a member of the Valley Hostage Negotiations Team, Valley Civil Disturbance Unit, Emergency Vehicle Operations Course Instructor, and a Field Training Officer. As a Field Training Officer, Chad assists in teaching the next generation of officers coming to the department. Chad is highly motivated and hard-working. He strives daily to make a positive difference in our community, strongly desires to mentor younger officers, and is always willing to assist other officers on his squad. Chad's academic accomplishments include graduating with an Associate Degree in Commercial Flight and a Bachelor's Degree in Aviation Management. Please join me in congratulating Corporal Chad Smith for this significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Chad's mother, Ms. Tammy Smith, will be pinning on the badge tonight. She drove five and a half hours from Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, to be here tonight. Okay, we're fortunate to have these outstanding individuals, our agency leaders. Please join me one last time thanking them for their exceptional service and congratulating them for their significant career achievements. Okay, first, we'll have Deputy Chief Casey Jones, if you could come up for your oath of office.
Chief, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Casey Jones.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that you will support the Constitution.
And I'll support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of Deputy Chief of Police.
Perform the duties of Deputy Chief of Police.
In and for the city of Federalway.
In and for the city of Federalway.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
As such duties prescribed by law.
As such duties prescribed by law.
Congratulations, Deputy Chief. It's great to say, say that after all these years. Please raise your right hand. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Michael Coffey.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of Police Commander.
Perform the duties of Police Commander.
In and for the city of Federalway.
In and for the city of Federalway.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And as such duties prescribed by law.
And as such duties prescribed by law.
Lieutenant, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Josh McConnell.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of Lieutenant.
Perform the duties of Lieutenant.
In and for the city of Federalway.
In and for the, uh, city of Federalway.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And other duties as prescribed by law.
And other duties as prescribed by law.
All right, Corporals, come on up. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Blake Losfar.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of Corporal.
Perform the duties of Corporal.
In and for the city of Federalway.
In and for the city of Federalway.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And duties as prescribed by law.
And duties as prescribed by law.
Congratulations. Yeah, what we're gonna do, we're gonna do a picture, uh, officers or leaders, if you could back up a little bit, what we'll do is have the council stand up behind you, and I'll get a back-up there. And you guys, why don't we do this? As soon as we take the picture, why don't we take like a five to seven-minute recess? So families can say goodbye to each other, and so we'll probably have some folks leave, but why don't we say about five to seven minutes? Why don't we be in recess until seven PM? Let's give it about seven minutes, so you guys could talk just a few minutes.
Congratulations, you guys. Okay, we did it. Thanks, congratulations.
When are we being recessed until seven PM? Yeah, let's give it about seven minutes, so you guys could talk just a few minutes.
Congratulations.
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 Those young people and they went right to work. You could see down below in the lower left what one of those two buildings looks like. And then the players running at the camp. And then we had the Association of Washington Cities Conference on June 27th through 29th. And council members, would you like to, council president or council member Honda, would you like to talk about the conference?
So I actually have my book here. I was going to talk about it a little bit later, but the conference was very successful this year. We had 100 more council or elected officials there than we had last year, which was awesome. So we had about 500 elected officials there, a number of vendors and other people from the state government and other governments there. We talked about everything from the importance to belonging, to how to find money, to all sorts of things. But I'll talk about a little bit later about the classes that I took. And we had a Juneteenth celebration when we were there because it started on Juneteenth, which is a holiday in Washington State. So next year and going forward, the conference will be a week after so that we do not compete with Juneteenth. It was too difficult to get some speakers and other people there. But it was, I thought it was a great conference and well worth our time.
Very good. Thank you very much. Council President?
It was held in Vancouver, Washington. So Association of Washington Cities or all the cities within the state of Washington, leaders from those different cities talking about mutual concerns that we have. And I think you'll be interested to hear that two cities in particular, one is Fife, right down the road, have tiny villages for the homeless. But to have them, have the opportunity to live in these tiny houses, they have to have no drug usage. And I thought that that was, and they have to, in Fife, their rules were you have two years to get back into a paying job on your own. And so I thought that was interesting to hear those rules that make these work. Vancouver also had a tiny village. And so, but I think that many of you who have stepped forward in this community know just instinctively the right thing to do, which was make sure that if people want help, that they can get help, but they have to abide by certain rules and regulations. So thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next slide. Okay, then we had, you could see Amanda there in the Summer Repair Cafe Fix-It Event last Saturday, the 29th. That was over at the Masonic Temple. And we had a great time. They do a great job at our tool library there. And Amanda has been doing fantastic work as their executive director. That's the line right there at the, just to the right of the picture with Amanda and I, and the picture of all the folks standing in line, getting ready, and some folks working on basically fixing little appliances or tables or that kind of thing. It's just a great community event. Then we had the Second Annual Beauty of Our African Roots Event on Saturday, June 29th. That's Beatrice right there, their executive director, in the orange dress. And then we were over at the Federway High School Theater. And it was great to see everybody there and listen to the great presentations and just everything they're doing in the community and some really special folks in our community, celebrating their heritage and celebrating being new immigrants to the United States and what they're doing. Okay, and then the picture to the right was my Como TV interview on the Red, White and Blues. That occurred this morning. That's myself with Kelly Koopmans. And there's something called ARC TV that's associated with Como that, Dave, can you explain what ARC is in relation to Como?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So as the mayor mentioned, it's part of the Como TV family, if you will. But ARC Seattle, it's a new morning show that Como just started up, and they're adding another hour to the morning show, I believe, this month. So great opportunity to kind of have some long-form broadcast journalism, a great platform to tell our stories in the federal way.
Yeah, they made note of the fact that this was my third time on the show. And like SNL, they said if I came back two more times, I'd get a jacket. So it was fun. A great, great crew down there at Como. And they're telling good stories about Federal Way, about what we're up to. And we talked about, you know, that 20,000 of our closest friends are gathering on Thursday for fireworks and fun, and just going to be a great event. And John, we gave them some of the, we gave them some of the swag from the hats and the sunglasses. Kelly actually says, do you want me to put these sunglasses on? And had the City of Federal Way on them, and it was good. So we also let people know just, you know, what we were promoting and a safe and healthy and fun family event. So, and she took note of the fact that I picked out the soundtrack. So something I get to, a fun thing I get to do every year. Okay, next slide. Okay, these are things that are coming up. July 4th is going to be a busy, busy day. We start off at, the race starts at 9:00 AM. The Miles for Miso Family Fun and Run and Walk on July 4th starts at 9:00 AM. I would suggest getting there a little bit earlier. It's probably not too late to register for that. Right, John?
I believe you can still do walk-up registration, Dave. Be there by about 8 o'clock, please, if you're going to walk up and register.
They've been raising money for a long time for mesothelioma. And it's a really, I believe, three or four widows from the area started this, this run, this family run and walk. And they've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for that very important cause. Next, we're going to be at the North Lake Fourth of July Parade on July 4th at 11:00 AM. And that's always a great, I think that event's been going over 60 years now, right? 60? Yeah, and that's over at North Lake. And that's a great opportunity to, you know, see, it's kind of an old-timey parade. It's really, it's great. It's a, it's a good time. So if you'd like to see, you know, they do floats and those kids, and then there's hot dogs afterwards, so you can't beat that. Okay, so Red, White and Blues starts again. Doors open at 4:00 PM. And then we light the fireworks off at 10:15. We got the bagpipe guy, John?
We do.
All right, 10:15. He starts playing the National Anthem, and then we're a go. Okay, Summer Sounds Concert at Steel Lake Park on July 10th at 6:30 to 8:00. And then We Love Our City, a citywide serve day on July 13th, 9:00 AM to noon. And so you can see a picture from, we're just a great group at, you know, We Love Our City. They truly do. And so if you're interested in helping out on that, just let us know, and we'll connect you up with the organizers for that. Okay, I think that's, that's what I've got. Okay, now the most important part of the evening, which is to hear from you. Yes?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes. Maybe I should look at my agenda. Thank you, Brian. I was just in such a hurry to get to public comment here. All right, Chief, talk to us about fireworks. Remind us. Great job.
All right, good evening again. And I'll be sharing with you the steps the police department is taking to mitigate and mitigate firework complaints and violations. The Federway Police Department wants to remind our residents that all personal use of fireworks is illegal within the city limits of Federal Way. Fireworks have been illegal in our community for the past 30 years. Civil infraction of $615 for firework violations. And so far, we've already had eight enforcement contacts, five juveniles, three adults. And we will continue our enforcement effort, education effort through July 5th. We will have the highest concentration of officers work in the street on the Fourth of July. On the Fourth of July, we will be overwhelmed in terms of calls for service for firework violation. But we are proactively working now to mitigate. We'll do emphasis patrol to cover Celebration Park. That's where we'll have our command post vehicle and a lot of our officers at that location. We'll have about four officers at Steel Lake Park and other parks, and we'll patrol neighborhoods throughout the city. We anticipate with the warm weather, we're going to have fairly good-sized crowds at Steel Lake Park near the water. So we'll have officers there. And we will respond to resident complaints for noise and safety issues. We already have maybe eight to 10 locations where we, residents have contacted us where they've had prior problems. So we're being proactive to contact them and warning them now not to do fireworks on the Fourth of July, and we'll, we'll check those locations on that day. So we're trying to get compliance that way. And this is 2022 statistics. Besides the noise complaint, air pollution, scaring our four-legged friends, over 10,000 people are treated in emergency rooms throughout the nation. Eleven more people died of firework injuries in the days around Fourth of July in 2022. Sparklers can burn at 2,000 Fahrenheit, hot as a blowtorch. And I think it's our responsibility as adults to know the risks and protect our children and our community. And there's no doubt there's going to be significant fire threat because everything's going to be really dry and hot. So it's not going to take a lot to get a fire going. And each year, there's approximately 15,000 reported fires in our nation, including structure fires, vehicle fires, and outdoor fires. Our goal, our number one goal for law enforcement is to get voluntary compliance. We've been getting the word out on our social media accounts. We did a press release, and the Mirror put out something about fireworks being illegal in Federal Way. And then if our residents have known problem location, let us know. And we will make sure our team hits those locations. And any firework in progress complaints, we're encouraging our residents call the Non-Emercy Police Dispatch number. That's listed here, 253-835-2121. Many of our residents get confused about which number to call. They'll call the main office, front desk, 6700. It's not staffed, not during non-business hours. So this is directly to the Valley Comp Dispatch Center. And somebody will answer the call here, but we get complaints after they call the 6700 number to the main station that nobody ever answers. Well, you're not going to get an answer on the weekend or on the Fourth of July. Okay. Unless there's, are there any questions? That's the presentation.
One of the things I would say is, you know, unfortunately, sometimes some of our neighbors, you know, we're, we're in our homes and we see, we hear or see some of our neighbors doing things that they know they shouldn't be doing. And if you need a, if you have somebody that's a chronic violator of that, we, just as the chief said, we can go out and talk to folks, just, you know, again, to get voluntary compliance. So we certainly don't want to, you know, we don't want to have to cite people that, that's a huge fine. And we don't want to have to do that, but we will if we have to. There have been years in which we've lost houses because of cedar shake roofs and a bottle rocket will take down a house. So work with us and, you know, if you, if you need us to go out and talk to somebody, we will. Council President?
Mayor, I wonder if there's any way we can leave on the 6700 number a recording to say to call the 835 number?
That's a good idea. Chief, is that something we could do? Leave a message on the 6700 number?
Absolutely. I'm not sure exactly what it says. It might have a message already similar to that, but we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay. And then you could, they could, we're not discouraging people from calling 911, right? If they see this happening outside their doors. I mean, you know, one year, you know, got a long time before I was mayor, I saw somebody right outside my house, and they were new to the community, and they were having a big show right out there, right in the middle of the street. Is there, would you encourage people to just call 911?
Yeah, you could call 911, but 2121 is a preferred, but it goes to the same call center. But yes, depending on call service, we have teams of officers. We'll respond to the location.
Okay, very, very good. Councilwoman Honda?
Thank you. As someone who's had three fires behind my house because of fireworks, I would really encourage you to please not use fireworks. Not in Federal Way. There are other areas that you might be able to find a spot where it's legal to use fireworks. But it's, it's not legal in King County. King County Council voted that a couple of years ago. And I don't know about Pierce County, but as someone who has been terrified three times that I was going to lose my house due to someone using fireworks inappropriately behind my house, I would please ask you not to do that.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Chief. Chief, how many officers are we going to have on patrol for fireworks? Just for fireworks emphasis?
Well, on the Fourth of July, probably five or six teams out there.
Teams, okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay. And you know, I had, David and I were at the market on Saturday, and somebody came up and had this very same question about, you know, in their, in their particular neighborhood. And we were able to follow up and proactively get out there to try to prevent that kind of thing. Okay. All right, that's it, right? Before we go to public comment? All right, let's start public comment. This most important thing we do, you know, everyone in meetings to hear from you. You've got three minutes. Green means go. Yellow means you've got 30 seconds. Red means please stop. I don't like to, I don't like to interrupt people. Also, just tell us the community you live in. If you live here, that's great. If you live somewhere else, that's great, too. Just let us know. We don't need your address. We already have it on the pink sheet. Remember, don't direct the council, direct comments directly to the council or individuals. Direct comments to the whole, to the council. With that, and let's all be polite. With that, we've got, why don't I call them off? We don't, actually don't have that many, so I'll call them all off right now. First is going to be Brad Bush, then Anna Patrick, then Ken Blevins, then Craig Patrick, and then Betty Taylor. And do we have anything online? Not yet? Okay. Brad?
Good, good evening. You got me going here? Okay. My name's Brad Bush, and I live in Federal Way. And I got a surprise violation in my mail on Thursday of last week. It said that my vehicle, basically I called on it and talked to the lady that's the officer. And I was told that because my driveway and my gravel area were bigger than 20 feet, that I couldn't park my vehicles in my gravel area. And I says, what? And so I looked around and found that a lot of people had cars and bigger driveways, three-car driveways and things like that. So I'm a bit confused on how that should do. I gave you folks a picture of my property. Mayor, you've been to my house?
Yep.
As well as Jack. My house is pretty clean, you know, the areas there shouldn't really be anything. And most of the time, I only have two cars in my area, my van, which I use for my kids, grandkids. We sleep out in the van sometimes. And I use it for traveling. And then I have a blue car that parks on the, in the driveway, and I have another car that's inside our garage that moves in and out. I really don't use up 20 feet, but I'm willing to try to do something. My wife and I went out and bought an electrical cord to try to move our electrical all the way to the other side. But I don't know that all this is necessary. The place we got it is flat. We can go out there and sit. And I went around the neighborhood, and there's a lot of people that are involved with this. So I, I'm encouraging you to take another look at this ordinance. And please, please think about the people that have these things. They're not on the street. Isn't it more dangerous to have something like that out on the street? So in conclusion, I'd like to see that ordinance terminated or at least relooked at and maybe reworded to support people like me that keep their area clean and keep the things. I'd also like to ask for a, I've got an extension till Friday. I'd like to have a further extension of 30 days if that would be possible. Sorry.
Okay. All right, Brad, thank you very much. What I don't see on your pink sheet is a phone number or email address. Keith, can you please connect with Mr. Bush right now? Make sure we've got his phone number, email address, and the actual physical address.
She has, Stephanie does, on the form.
I want, I want Keith, or Keith is our director. He oversees code compliance. He's going to give, he's going to talk with us tomorrow. He's also going to give you a call tomorrow as well to follow up on this. I do want to let everybody know that one of the things we stopped, or I thought we stopped, issuing citations while we're in the planning stages in land use on these rules as they're in the midst of being changed. So Keith, let's, we can't take comments from the audience. It's okay, Ms. Bush. Thank you. So we'll, we'll follow up. Okay. And thank you, Mr. Bush, for coming. All right, Anna Patrick?
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council in public. My name is Anna Patrick. I've been a resident of Federal Way for, since the 90s, somewhere along that. And I am here to, first of all, just share with the public that the Stand Up Federal Way nonprofit, community nonprofit, did a cleanup on the property between St. Vincent de Paul property and the Boys and Girls Club. So there's a path there that was overgrown with blackberries, and it was not feeling safe for people that were walking through there. And they came out and they cleaned up most of it. It was a lot to clean up. Looks really a lot better. And they're going to go out on July 6th and finish up. I've been asked to announce this, so I'm kind of stumbling through it. And so they're going to, they're going to need some help hauling away some of the stuff and finishing up the cleanup. Apparently, it makes it more visible for anybody that drives by, makes it safer, just opens the whole area up. So anybody that lives around that area or wants to go and just try out the trail, it's kind of nice. And so that's on July 6th. And they're going to need some help with yard waste removal as well. And I'd also like to congratulate the officers for their promotions. And then on to the next topic. On June 26th, at 1:00 PM, there was a meeting held by King County, the Justice Committee, where there was a motion made by King County Councilmember Dunn to declare the King County Council's intent to maintain the operations of the Patricia Clark Family Justice Center. And there's a video that you can view on the website from that date. If you go to that meeting on the King County Council meetings, you can see the video and view the comments and the discussion. It's pretty informative. Most of the people that showed up to testify were nonprofits that were recipients of grants. And most of the people, from what I heard, wrote comments were in favor of keeping the jail open. There were a few people, one person testified, whose child was a victim at, I think it was Garfield High School, of some violence, asking them to not close the jail. And then there was somebody, the two people that worked in the field that said, you know, that's not a good idea. So I just wanted to announce this because if you want to comment, you should send an email to kccomit at kingcounty.gov if you're wanting to weigh in on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Ken Blevins?
Mayor, Council, thanks for listening to my comments. I'm a Federal Way citizen since the 70s. And what I wanted to talk about today, I have to kind of wear a couple of hats, too, like she did. So I went and did the cleanup with the Stand Up Federal Way community. And I was told that there was just going to be some litter picks, and because there were some condoms and, there's a drug house, like it's a block away that they're having an issue with, and the neighbors asked to help out with that. It's a path that I've, I've gone on that path since I was a little kid, too. So I'm a part of that church, did some stuff there. My kids actually went to that school. And so it being so overgrown, it really is kind of people just doing stuff there where kids are walking to and from. So it's not school right now, so it's not as big a deal. But there were people that walked by while we were doing it. But it wasn't just litter. It was a lot of blackberries. We did like probably 30 yards by about 20 yards of just a lot of stuff. Everybody got bloody. And so we're good because once you wash it off, it's just a bunch of, you just get stabbed a lot with blackberries. But everything was really successful. We, they even cut up some trees and stuff like that. They had arborists there that was just, you know, there. And so it was really cool. Big piles of debris. Now, the next step is to kind of finish a little bit of it because we bit off more than we could chew. I don't know if the, I know the Stand Up Federal Way community was working with the city on, you know, just making sure that we were doing the right thing, that, you know, there's no real owner of that place, or it's everybody's. And so I don't know if the city would be interested in helping out with the big pile of debris there. But it's sitting in St. Vincent's parking lot. They let us use that parking lot. So if there's some way that that can happen, that would be awesome. Just be, I know that we're a community and we work together, and so that would be really cool. On the other side of things, next subject, since the Supreme Court ruling with the homeless and the, them being able not to camp wherever they want and so on, I don't, I want to know what the council has planned for that, what we can do that's different. I know the state is probably just going to say, make it so that it's the same and they can still camp or whatever it is. But honestly, this is a great opportunity for leadership for our city to kind of just really stand up and, you know, be loud and say, hey, these are homeless drug addicts mostly. And this is a great time to be able to, you know, maybe give them a misdemeanor or something like that, and something over their head where they can go to court and they can end up in treatment instead of just housing where they can just kill themselves. So I, you know, I, I look at that as a great opportunity. It's not to attack homeless or anything like that. It's just a good opportunity to, for the people that are having real problems with addiction and mental health problems, to be able to get in there and help them be served better. So anyways, just wanted to see what the, maybe you guys, in the future, will be telling us what you guys have planned. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Ken. EJ, let's talk about that pile of debris at the, at the church and see what we can do about getting that. Actually, Ken, can you, can you provide EJ with some details about where in the property that is and perhaps who the contact is there? You guys can talk about that. We'll, we'll confer. All right, Craig Patrick and then Betty Taylor. Craig?
Okay, all right. All right, we missed out.
All right. Betty Taylor? Betty?
My name is Betty Taylor, and I live in the city of Federal Way. So I'm here to talk about an event that's going to happen Friday. The event is called Traffic Jam for Peace. It is July 5th, Friday at 12:00 PM. Okay, let me tell you a little bit about this. Okay, what is Traffic Jam for Peace? An all-city-and-county community peace rally led by the BIPOC community leaders, organizations, youth, families and residents who have been affected by gun violence and want to create change. So this is about a rally. And rally instructions, this is a mobile peace rally, and you will need your car, truck or motorcycle to participate. Decorate your vehicle with message of hope and peace. Starting location, Airport Way and South Norfolk Street. Vehicle check-in, 12:00 PM. The possession of vehicles will drive safely onto I-5 with the Seattle Police Department escort to First Avenue exit. Ending location, Edgar Martinez Drive, Street and First Avenue at King 5 Station, Plaza Peace, Peace Rally Stage. This is a flyer, and I'm just helping to promote another organization that is putting this on, which is called Urban Family and Community. This is a flyer for Traffic Jam for Peace. So I'm pretty sure we all want peace. And I'm pretty sure that if you're affected by gun violence like me, if you're tired of being tired, of course, you want to join with others so that we can spread the good word about peace. And this says, Mobile Peace Rally, July 5th, 12:00 PM. Pull up with your car, truck or motorcycle and ride out with your community to end gun violence. Together we end gun violence. Kickoff to 100 days of peace. So rallying up, we're going to have 100 days of peace, okay? So gearing up for this. This is just a kickoff to that and stuff. And this is something that I have been looking forward to doing for a long time. I was wondering if there was an organization out there that was really doing something to, to fight gun violence or defend, or, I mean, you know? So I plan on being there with my car and, but I'm not driving my car. I'll be in somebody else's car. But we're going to decorate the cars, and it's going to be a symbol of peace. We want peace in our streets, peace in our communities, and the only way that we're going to obtain peace is if we work together. So we can't do it without togetherness. I have two flyers right here. If somebody wants to make copies, you are more welcome to do that. So, okay, my time is up. up.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody online? All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much for a public comment this evening. And now we're on item six, Presentations, Arts Commission Update and Report. And Stephanie, how long did we say? Five minutes? Okay, maybe you can set the timer. Let's just make sure we're, see, we, once they get started.
And does this advance it?
You can either click there, or you can just click these arrows back and forth.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, President Kochmar, City Council, Mayor Farrell. I am here to present a pictorial on the Arts Explosion Arts Festival. First, we have to thank you for the ARPA funds that made this possible. Without them, we, we would not have this. And so let it begin. We had our festival. This is our first day. Luckily, we went from three days to six. This is our first day. The Parks Commission guys were there putting up the art walls, the art lighting. Down in the lower corner, that's the Arts Commission taking in artwork. We had our white gloves treatment, and the artists were very appreciative of that. Yes, I got a little enthusiastic with my selfies. The top is Avetta, who's right behind me, and one of the judges, Barry Johnson. Of course, there's the mayor there, too. The middle picture is actually a delegation from our sister city, Hachinoe. In the middle of all of those kids and their five chaperones is Claire Wilson, our representative from Olympia. We were blessed by having a bonsai from the Pacific Bonsai Gardens there, too. That's the picture of the tree. And the one below shows a tree with all of the other artwork. Here we go on some of the artwork that was there. It was such a creative bunch of artwork. The one on the right, we called SpongeBob SquarePants, because it looks like bikini bottom. Okay, here we go. The top is Cassie, our representative from the city of Federway, our, our staff. This is just a funny picture. Of all of the artwork blended together, there's some more, that flag that's on the wall, extremely heavy, but we found a place for it. The bottom is the awards ceremony we had Friday evening. The, the picture is astounding, and this is why all the artists love it at our PAC. It has ambiance. There's a view. It is really spectacular. The mountain was out that day, too. Here we are, the Arts Commission doing our crazy stuff. And more art down at the bottom, too. On the left is Kiwanis, who was our partner for the occasion. Bottom left, that is our food truck, Soul Fusion Food. You could get your oxtail dinner, a catfish dinner, and peach pie. And there's some more artwork, and the winners of some of the artwork. The one up top with the red second, it, that is an agave plant. I thought it was an artichoke, but it's an agave. Interesting. Some more artwork that's there, the photography. Wonderful artwork, the one on the left of the, of the seascape, that boy did not realize that he was an artist, not until he showed, and he won People's Choice Award. Some more artwork. There's that big octopus in the middle that is just so fun to see. And of course, the artist that came through with the picture of the boy says, it's kind of what, I just finished it. That is spectacular. One of the arts commissioners said DaVinci when she saw that one, it's so good. There's some of our creative artwork, too. The one in the middle is Alexander Kamola's. He has since dedicated some of his artwork to the upcoming Kiwanis salmon bake, so you could buy his artwork there. This is some of our performers. The top left is from the Performing Arts, the Youth Symphony Concert. They had a taekwondo that came through. Of course, you have Neil Hubbard and his bagpipes. You have Sound Celebration down below. In the middle is the Singing in Seattle. It's a Russian choir. Of course, up top are Fajana Marzlov. She is Ukrainian opera star, beautiful voice. Carlee Burmark on the right, we have everybody there. Oh, my gosh, Bob is there. We have our, our harpist, Bonnie Wisenkamp. And of course, we have Kenny Byrne. He was our emcee of the day, singing with, with everyone. The Marine Hills Jazz Jam is there. And that ends our pictorial. And now we have, whoops. We should have had the, let me see. It was supposed to have the mayor's, supposed to have the, the mayor's brief thing there, too, and I don't know why it's not going.
Can you pause the timer real quick? If we've got somebody from IT that can come out?
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to click.
Here he comes. Yeah. I think Autumn beat you to it. Thank you, Autumn.
No, it's not there. Is there a second one up there? Nope. Nope, okay. No, I think that was the, I think that was it. That was the end of your show. Okay. All right, okay. The numbers. We had a total of, well, we, we used a P A C usher that had a clicker, so we know exactly how many numbers we came through. We had 1,021 visitors, unique visitors to the PAC. The Kiwanis Foundation, of course, helped us out with the sales. We had a sale of 15 artworks there. That is a major improvement over last year. Kiwanis, of course, helped us gather sponsors and grants. They paid all the prize money. We were able to give stipends to all the performers and judges. They facilitated the sale of the artwork. They also paid the hard costs of the P A C. And in the, and Kiwanis did have a reserve left over for next year. I want to thank, of course, the Parks and Rec people, Cassie, and especially Abby Weinick for their organization, and all the people at the Performing Arts Event Center. This event, of course, is Avetta's dream, standing behind me. She and Marina Pukas, they had the forethought to look at all the pictures, place them exactly where they needed to go. It was exponentially much better than last year. And we're hoping for two more categories this next year. We're going to have textile arts incorporating the Pacific Islanders, cedar bark weaving. The quilters and crafters were out, and they were kind of interested. Do we have art? Yes, they do. And of course, the other three that are already there. We, of course, showed the artists lots of attention, lots of appreciation. We have made it on the map for all of the artists in the area. We do. It's like a countdown. Edmunds, Kent International, Emerald Downs, Federway, Bremerton, we're, we're on the map. And luckily, that is going, and of course, we're marketing the P A C the whole time. And that's probably why they like to come here. Last year, we accepted 70 artists with 120 artworks. It literally exploded this year. We had 320 artworks that wanted to show. We used, the, the Arts Commission itself, of course, true artists and performers among all of us, prejudged the artwork, getting it down to 200. And of course, that caused us all to look at the paragraphs that each artist wrote. And all they were asked is, please tell us your art journey. And that paragraph alone was enough to set us back. They, they told us about their joys of artists' expression. They use art as therapy through depression, addiction, PTSD, the loss of a child. When they are in their artwork phase, they don't worry about anything. It is truly amazing to see this. It's not frivolous. It's not luxury. It's a way of life, and it's, it's heir to these people. It's heir to any performer. There's one particular quote out of them that I wanted to share. "I am energized by Federway's mission to give art and artists a showcase for the power of art to affect and change the world." Change the world. Cities around us have captured this energy. Artists, of course, all artists realize that it is an economic engine. Our peer cities cherish arts. Our peer cities have arts on their biennial budgets. They show that they're, they have it either as Arts Commission or cultural arts. They describe how they have multiple arts grants, public art, arts and residence. They have art galleries, kids' art programs. Our biennial budget doesn't have us on. We aren't recognized. We, we were about 12 years ago. We were taken off. I, I don't know why. I'm still clueless as to why. We just ask to be back on. That's all we want. And of course, when we're back on, we will be there with a budget that is significantly lower than every other city around us. All of our peer cities are more. 80% of our arts budget now has to go for contracts for services. That amount has stayed level two, and no change. All of you are aware, I've sent it all to everybody. Please change us. We want this to be a pivotal year. We brought you the Arts Explosion. Please fund us in other ways. We got the ARPA funds. They were a great help, but it doesn't help your tour and onward. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Okay, item seven. These are Council Committee and Regional Committee reports. Oh, before we move on, Mr. Bush, you mentioned getting your court case continued. Make sure you work with the municipal court before you move to, no matter what we do, if it's been, if it's, if it's before the court, make sure you're working with the court about it getting continued. Nothing you said here today would affect the court, okay? So if you've got a court date, make sure you work with them to get it continued. No? Okay. All right, let's see here. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
Hello. This, there are several items on the, on the consent agenda. We were from our, our last meeting. And I didn't point them out right now, but they're, they're on there. Okay, anyway. And this next, now in July, we will not be having a, a Parks Committee meeting, Parks Recreation, Public, Human Service and Public Safety Committee meeting in July. There were really no agenda items, so we canceled that meeting. Normally, we do not have one in August, because the, the council meeting ends up being on the, on the day that we have the, normally are scheduled for the, for the Parks Committee, because the council meeting is, the day that we normally have the Parks, the council meeting is, is, is national night out. And so, anyway, so we normally don't have a Parks Committee in, in August. So our next meeting will be in September. Any items that would normally go to the Parks Committee, urgent items, they'll go to another, another committee during July and August. And that is it for Parks.
Great, thank you. Land Use and Transportation Committee, L U T C, Councilmember Dovi.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is August 5th. We had a land use meeting last night. Coming up on the 5th, I believe, we're going to have the discussions on motor homes. Is that on the schedule, Keith? So this public comment is good timing, but we will be discussing motor homes and neighborhoods on our next land use meeting. And last night, we had some discussions about looking at different parts of the city and trying to creatively incent developers to do things differently for middle housing. And that will be coming back probably a coup, not next month, but probably sometime in August or September. Keith's staff, as time will work, will work on some things to bring to the committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Finance, Economic Development and Regional Affairs, Fedrec, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had a meeting on June 25th. All seven council members were present, and I thank you for that. The committee approved and forwarded eight items to the consent agenda for your approval today, item B through I. I just want to mention a couple of things. For the monthly financial report, the finance department is watching this very closely right now, because the permit fee is $910,000 below prior year. So, so we are watching that. The other thing that we are watching is the REIT. We are $300,000, more than $300,000 below 2023 year-to-date. So those are the two items that we are closely monitoring right, right now. In addition to that, we, let's see, we approved the Washington Criminal Justice Training Wellness Grant. This is to support and expand a police department officer wellness program. And let's see. Another item of interest is we authorize the addition of fixed-term inspector position. This is the conversion from existing temporary inspector position to a two-years fixed-term inspector position within the existing budget. And another item is we purchased two used vehicle for the emergency management program, and we use this to establish the mobile incident command post and mobile communication. This is under the leadership of our emergency manager, Kevin Pelly. And Councilmember Palmer Daniel and I was trying to talk to Kevin and let us borrow the trailer for camping, right? That's haven't happened yet, so we're, we're working on it.
He's joking.
Yes, we're just joking. There was one item that the committee feel that we should bring it to the full council tonight for further discussion, and that is the Global Spectrum 2023 Incentive Fee. So that item is coming up later on. Our next meeting going to be on July 23rd at 5:00 PM in this room. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Lodging Tax Advisor Committee, Councilmember Asafadossi.
Thank you, Mayor. And our meeting for July has been canceled, so there's nothing to report on.
Great, thank you. Regional Committees Report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. First of all, the PIC meeting is next Wednesday, July 10th at 7:00. It's on Zoom, and we'll be discussing solid waste rates and long-term disposal decision process for King County, the nuclear radiation health effects, and a regional alignment on asylum and refugee crisis. The PIC Committee has been discussing this for about three months, and it is a King County-wide problem, but the cities of Tuaqila and Kent in South King County are quite affected by the number of refugees that they have in their cities. So anyway, I'll be bringing more information to the council about that after next Wednesday, and hope for your input. I had the opportunity to attend a King County Landmarks Commission meeting at Fort, I'm, at Fort, at Camp Kilworth last week. And I haven't been down to Camp Kilworth for a while, so it was great to be back there. It's one of my favorite places in Federway. The YMCA is doing a great job of renovating the camp. There's going to be two phases. There are Phase 1, they're bringing some dirt in this week to cover up the dirt from Arsaco, Arsaco. There, they took down the old caretaker's house because it was pretty bad. They're building, bringing in a new one pretty soon as soon as they get all the permitting done. The Rotary Lodge, which was pretty well damaged by vandals and by weather and not being kept up, is in Phase 2, and they will be raising some money for that. They anticipate it will be several million dollars to renovate that. Even the chandeliers were stolen out of that, the lodge, which is just, I don't know how anyone could have done that. But it was, it was very uplifting to see the work that's been done, and knowing that the YMCA is the caretaker of Camp Kilworth, and that it will be there for my grandchildren and great-grandchildren and yours, and all of the children in South King County, but especially here in Federway, because it really is a beautiful place, and kids need it. You know, you can be walking through Camp Kilworth and forget that there's a really busy road not very far away. You don't hear it. You don't see it. And it just, all the trees, it's, it's a very magical place. magical place. So it's not open to the public, but if you do want a tour, I'm sure if you call Josh at YMCA, he would arrange for, for, for you to, to see it, and he doesn't know I'm saying that, but anyway, it is, it's a magical place. And I do have the, so the landmark commission meeting that was there, it was interesting to hear some of the concerns that they have, and I do have some information from the architects about what they will be doing there, if you're interested in looking at that. In September, the DVI Task Force of King County, which I'm a member of, will be holding a, a meeting down in Kent, Kent City Hall, and we are inviting all SCA members and prosecutors, judges, police chiefs, and DVI advocates. We're going to have a networking breakfast from summer 30 to 9:00, so consider this your first invitation. And then we will be talking about what the task force does and how we could or would like to get help from the city councils in South King County. We do have an issue here in South King County with domestic violence. I'm sure the mayor can talk about that quite a bit. He was a prosecutor, and some of the work that he did there in King County, they, they still use some of the forms that he did. So please, I would love for you to come. The date is not yet chosen, but it'll be in early September, and it'll be in Kent. So I will let you know when that happens. It'll be on a Wednesday, too. And not on a good eggs Wednesday. The AWC Annual Conference, I attended several classes and sessions, but the one that had the most impact on me was the Chelsea Anderson Memorial Place Station and Marshall Community Park Tour. And Councilmember Walsh went with me on that. And there was a, there was a park that was created down in Vancouver for a little girl who, his dad was a firefighter, and she drowned about 25 years ago. And the park needed to be redone, and they wanted to make it an inclusive park. And so it cost about, I believe, $4,000, most of which was raised. The city of Vancouver put in a little over a million for it.
Four, four million. You said 4,000.
Did I say 4,000? Oh, okay, four million. But, and mostly that was raised with donations and other folks. So I know I was extremely impressed by what I saw. I, I would love to see something like that here in Federal Way. We spent a good hour or so there. It was, it was just amazing. And we have the, the architect and the company that developed it and designed it is out of Vancouver, Washington now. We have his business card. We'd love to get him here in Federal Way to let him, to show him our city and get his ideas and what we could possibly do here. And I have talked with our state representatives. This is something that they would try to find money for us, as they have found money for other cities to build inclusive parks. I'm not asking that the city build this all on our own because I know that we can't do that, but I don't think it's something that is impossible to do. I think it's something that we could do with, with help and with a lot of planning. And I, I would just, I want to see it happen in my lifetime before I leave the council. And council, if you could go back to Friday, if you went to the annual conference, you got an email from AWC. It is your evaluation of the conference, and if you can return that by July 12th, we would appreciate it. I'm a member of the Committee for Education and Training for AWC, and we look at these evaluations, and we really do look at them. So if you could at least fill that out and send it in, we'd appreciate it. So we know what you like, what you didn't like, and what we can improve on for next year. Thank you.
Okay. Council President Cochran.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make some announcements and then say thank you to several individuals, but tomorrow I'll be attending, every year we have an audit by the state, Steve, so if I say anything wrong, let me know for our budget. And we'll have an entrance, there's an entrance conference and an exit interview. So tomorrow will be the entrance conference, and so I'll be attending that tomorrow with Steve and I expect the mayor. Also, I want to let you know that at the community center, we have many activities going on right now. If you're wondering what to do with your children for the summer, we have summer camp, and we have swimming lessons. So go over to the community center, go online, and see if you can't sign your children up. Really some fun activities there. And then yesterday, we went to, the Children's Hospital has a clinic in Federal Way. So I was there along with Councilmember Honda and Councilmember Walsh to tour. They're going to be expanding the clinic, which is right near Costco, and they're expanding into the old Mantris building place. And so a wonderful clinic for, for children up to ages 20, 25, I believe, or 26, but wonderful clinic. We're very fortunate to have that in our community. Then I'd like to say thank you. If you haven't been to Applebee's, and you go there for a sandwich or whatever, they have some pictures up on the wall, and a lot of them are of our city. And so as you go in now, they have a picture of City Hall. They have our mayor in a parade at Northlake, and a big picture of Terry Thomas holding his flags in the parade at Northlake. So if you go in there, say thank you to the manager or to the, tell the waitress to say thank you for featuring Federal Way. Before that, they had a lot of sports memorabilia, but now it's all about Federal Way. I thought that was pretty interesting. And I'd like to say thank you to some fellas. I was at Home Depot, and so this is just a community thing. So I'm at Home Depot, I'm trying to buy this, I bought the wrong thing, but it's, I'm trying to repair my deck. So they say get a two-by-six. Well, what the heck is a two-by-six? So I go in, and I ended up with something that's 10 feet long. Well, I guess six feet is different than 10 feet, but anyway. So I've got this really long piece of wood. I'm trying to get into my car. They had nobody to help me. You're all redoing your homes right now, modeling during the holiday. And so some, this cashier said, you know, we have some of the nicest customers in Federal Way, and so some customers helped me get this huge thing. It was, I had to drive home with this thing hanging out my window, but wonderful to have, wonderful people in the community to help and recognized by the cashier at Home Depot. So thank you to all of you who do that for other people. And then I'd like to say thank you. I saw the pictures of stand-up at the trail between the Boys and Girls Club and St. Vincent's. Holy cow, this is not a little trail, it's a big trail, and lots of bushes and trees and shrubbery, and, and so I think I saw Craig Patrick flat out on the ground, totally exhausted, trying to do all this work. So thank you to those people who volunteered in our community to help make it better. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. And Councilmember Honda, maybe you might talk to the Camp Kilworth folks about having just one day organized to have the public come through. I think it would be nice to have just one tour.
Yeah, they, they need to get some things taken care of for safety before they can do that. The Historical Society is probably going to have their annual meeting there in September, if everything works out.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, and now we're moving on to item eight, consent agenda. These items have gone through committee, can be passed all at once. After I read them, I'll ask if a council member wants to pull an item for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the June 18th, 2024, regular and special meetings. Item B, monthly financial report, May 2024. C, AP vouchers, 5/17/24 through 6/17/2024. Payroll vouchers, 5/1/2024 through 5/31/2024. D, abatement of 2647 South Star Lake Road. E, Washington Criminal Justice Training Commission Wellness Grant. F, update a video system component for the evidence building. G, authorization to add a fixed-term position in the Public Works Department. H, purpose of two used vehicles for emergency management. I, tourism enhancement grant tag recommendation. Council, after I've read those, would any council member want one of those items pulled for separate consideration? All right. Council President Cochran, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move approval of the consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. We're on to item nine, council business. Redondo Culvert Bid Acceptance. First, we'll have a staff presentation from John Mulkey, our senior civil engineer. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John Mulkey. I'm senior civil engineer for the CFA Way, and I am presenting the Redondo Creek Culvert bid award for your, start from, there we go. The policy question today is, should the council award the Redondo Creek at 16th Avenue South Culvert Replacement Project to Tucci and Sons, the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and approve a transfer from the surface water management capital of 306, or 304 unallocated fund? Background information, there were three bids received and opened on June 21st for the project, and the lowest responsive responsible bidder was Tucci and Sons with a bid of If you look at our, our budget with the estimated expenditures, including the contract contingencies, consortium management, the staff and consortium management out with additional inspection and testing, and the available funding, which are previous funding and the additional request for the $3,113,000 to cover costs for the funding. If you recall, the last time we also had, we did not know what that budget number would be. We said that we would come back at the time of award with what that final number would be. We knew it would be more. So the options considered are award the Redondo Creek at 16th Avenue South Culvert Replacement Project to Tucci and Sons, and the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the amount of $3,64,660.21, and approve a contingency of 306,460.602 for a maximum contract amount of 3371,126.23, and approve a transfer of $3,113,000 from the Surface Water Management Capital Fund 304 unallocated, authorize the mayor to execute the contract, or reject all bids and replacement project and provide direction to staff to rebid the project for further action. And mayor recommends option one. I'm available for any questions.
Council, any questions for John? All right. Councilmember Dovi.
Yeah, I'd like to move to award the Redondo Creek at 16th Avenue South Culvert Replacement Project to Tucci and Sons, Inc., the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the amount of $3,64,660.21, and approve a contingency of $306,466.2 for a maximum contract amount of $3,371,126.23, and approve the transfer of $3,113,000 from the Surface Water Management Capital Fund 30, 30, 304 unaccalated and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Thank you, John. Good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we're on to item B, Washington State Military Emergency Management Division Extreme Weather Response Grant for Emergency Shelter. First, we'll have a staff presentation from Leila Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, President Council Coachmore, and council members. My name's Leila Wilson with our Human Services. And let's see here. Perfect, thank you. Again, good evening. My name's Leila with our Human Services, Community Development Department, and this is going to be in the Extreme Weather Response Grant application. And we are requesting, should the city apply for a grant for extreme weather response for extreme heat, cold, or poor air quality shelters? The Washington State Military Department grant application has submitted an opportunity for us to apply for reimbursable grants of $350,000, depending on what we need to utilize that for throughout a period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, and there is not any local match. Option one would be to authorize staff to apply for the Washington State Military Extreme Weather Response Grant for emergency shelters. Option two, do not authorize the grant application and provide direction to staff. Mayor's recommendation, option one. Any questions?
All right, any questions? Councilmember Asafadossi.
Yeah, hi, thank you. So this is reimbursement?
Yes. So at any time during that period that we would set up any type of emergency shelter due to the extreme heat, cold, or any poor air quality due to fires, we have the opportunity to be reimbursed up to the amount that we submit a request for.
So can we have other agencies or like the shelters, what is it, like we do with their human services funding, can we reallocate to them and then get reimbursed that, that way?
Yes, that is exactly what it would be.
Right, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So in order to get reimbursed for this, are there, are there different criteria to use for setting up shelter, or do we use our same criteria we have for the city of Federal Way?
For the most part, it would be the same criteria. We would still use our current shelters. It would just be on a reimbursable, whatever we, whatever shelters we utilized during that time. So eligible expenses would be operating costs, transportation costs, staffing costs, which are some of the things that we currently utilize our shelters for.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions for Leila? All right, Councilmember Walsh.
I move to authorize staff to apply for the Washington Military Department Extreme Weather Response Grant. Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously. Leila, was this your first presentation?
It is, thank you.
Welcome, great, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, Global Spectrum LP, OVG 360, 20, boy, this is a lot of numbers, 2023 Incentive Fee. There's a rhyme in there somewhere. Our staff presentation from Autumn Gressit, Community Relations Liaison and Contract Administrator. Autumn?
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Good evening, Council President Cochran, council members. I am Autumn Gressit, Community Relations Liaison and Contract Administrator under the Parks Department. Let me get my PowerPoint up here really quickly. The item in front of you tonight is the Global Spectrum LP or OVG 360, their acronym, 2023 Incentive Fee.
It has a, it has kind of a ring to it.
It does. We refer to them as OVG 360 because it is a tongue twister. The policy question in front of you tonight is, should the city council approve the Global Spectrum LP OVG 360 2023 Incentive Fee in the amount of $34,489 and authorize staff to remit payment? Some of the background is per section 3.2 of their contract, there are performance metrics set in place to incentivize reduction of the financial burden to the city's general fund. OVG 360 has met and exceeded those performance criteria set forth in the operation year 2023. One of those performance metrics is the qualitative component. It is made up of five metrics equalling $10,000. Each item is worth $2,000 each. Number one, results of customer surveys, they earned $2,000 total. Number two, tenant and resident group relations, they earned $1,737.50. Number three, quality of food and beverage services, $1,955.56. Number four, achievement of annual event programming and attendance goals in the theater, they earned $500. And number five, achievement of annual event programming and attendance goals in the event space, they earned $500 as well. A total qualitative component of $6,563. The second component for their performance metrics is a qualitative component. This is 20% of the amount to be paid to the operator for the net operating income loss exceeds the net operating income loss benchmark. There's no cap on this amount. As you can see, for 2023, their benchmark was $1,1021. They came in at $861,390, leaving a bench, or leaving them ahead $139,631. That makes their 20% incentive $27,926 for a total payment to OVG 360 for the qualitative and quantitative components of $34,489. The options before you this evening are to approve the incentive fee, or option two, advise, decline advise, decline the incentive fee and advise staff. Mayor's recommendation is option one, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And we're fortunate that Stacia, our, the general manager for the facility is here as well.
Yes, Stacia is with us tonight.
Stacia? Hi. All right, Councilor Doby.
Yeah, I have a question, could you go back to the next slide, excuse me, right there? And I don't have any opposition with the bonus and meeting the needs, I think that's great. But in our budget year, so our benchmark, if I understand this, was that we were prepared to lose a million dollars, you know, $1,1021, that was our budget, correct?
The city, so the benchmark is the transfer in from the general fund? The city council approved, yes.
We agreed to lose a million dollars, based, plus or minus.
Invested.
And they did a great, they did a great job and we only lost $861,000.
The city invested, yes, about $861,000 in the community.
So if we go into the budget year and we say, they've done a great job, let's make it now, we're only going to be willing to do $861,000 loss because they improved the business by that much, wouldn't that be a good starting point on planting the seed for budget discussions? So that, you know, there's an incentive to drive the, the number down. Is that kinda how we should look at it?
Or is that driven by the, the current contract?
I mean, on today, they did a great job.
Yeah.
But we're going to go into budget in 2020 here pretty soon, and instead of saying, well, we're okay with losing a million, maybe we should ratchet it down and we're only okay with losing 800,000, because they did, so there's an incentive to do better.
Ultimately, the city council approves whatever that budget is, as we go through that process. There are several factors that need to be considered as we look forward to the budget. I think making it as simplistic as we got it down to 860.
And I understand it's not that simplistic.
Yeah, but I, that would be, yes, a good starting point in his numbers that we look at, but I think there are a lot of factors to look forward, just like any of our budgets across the board. And that's what we'll bring forth to you as we start having conversations in the fall.
Wow, that was a diplomatic answer. That was good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good question, we'll, we'll talk about it during the budget. And council, any other questions, comments? Councilor McDaniel.
Couple of questions, first one, what is the 2024 benchmark?
The 2024 benchmark, I'd be happy to send it to you, it's just over 900,000, but I don't have the number quite off the top of my head, so I don't want to misspeak.
So to answer, that, that's actually what, what council member Toby was saying, that number is predetermined?
The number is predetermined, when we did the budget cycle, the biennial budget cycle, we predetermined 23 and 24, and 24 was actually less than 23. So it'll be the same as we move forward to 25, 26.
And then can you go back to slide, a couple of slides back, that one right there?
Yes.
So in number one, two, and three, I kind of get, four and five, they got a quarter of it. What would the goals need have been to get the 100% for those two categories?
Coming out of the pandemic, we were pretty aggressive with their goals, we asked them to strive for pre-pandemic numbers, that would have helped them meet the $2,000 incentive, and that was something that was discussed in detail with OVG and internally. Ultimately, they exceeded numbers from 2022, but they didn't quite hit those benchmark numbers. I have it in the packet, and I apologize, I don't have those directly in front of me, but the third page within your packet shows the overall incentive requirements and what they should have met in order to meet the $2,000 goal.
I'll dig through that one again, but my, just out of loosely looking at this, I'm going to assume they made, they hit a quarter of what the goal would have been, is that a loose?
50%.
50%?
Yeah, they had to meet 50% in order to get 500, and then there was increments after that in order to get to the 2,000.
Gotcha. And then out of curiosity, with the numbers that we have coming in right now with the PAC, what, what growth percentage do we still have in there? Is there actually more gross percentage?
In regards to revenue?
Revenue, I mean, it seems to be booked pretty consistently, but I mean, it's trying to, I'm trying to get an understanding of exactly what that investment is going to be long term. I do know when this originally was agreed to, there was supposed to be some outside source income from some groups that have just not been able to make that happen, so I'm trying to get an understanding now of what this number is, what the potential is, and to really kind of lower my expectations to know what is legitimate in that business model, of what can that actually produce.
Absolutely, I think Stacia would agree with me that there's always room for revenue growth right now, and she's looking into a lot of those different models, I would point to her probably in the September meeting to dig a little bit deeper for you in there as far as what her projections and her goals are, and that's about when budget cycles start, so we'll have some better numbers. In regards to contributed revenue and other sources, we're also working on that as well for future years to kind of look back at what that model was supposed to be, and how can we reintegrate that within our nonprofit groups and what's happening at the PACs, so we anticipate being able to provide you some more detailed answers in the fall as well.
Gotcha. My last, I have two more questions. One's actually for legal. The contract that we signed for this one pretty much guarantees the payment for this if they hit the metrics, correct?
Yes, we're contractually obligated to pay this money.
Okay, I'm just curious, is because we're spending money, that it has to come back to the council in order to approve it?
Most contracts over a certain percentage require council approval, even if we're contractually obligated to pay the money, we still come back and ask you to, to comply with the contract.
Understood. And then if we don't comply with the contract, what actually does happen to these things?
We're in breach of contract.
Breach, and it goes to legal, and then it goes to public?
I don't know, I, they could sue us, they could ask kindly for the money and have us reconsider, it's not really something that's contemplated.
Well, I mean, just curious, how, yeah, okay. See if there's anything else. And then just last one, I was the one who actually had this pulled out because I do want to have the people who pay the bills for this place, because a lot of people don't use it, they're still paying for it, I wanted them to understand that the concept was that we didn't lose as much money, or we didn't invest as much money as we thought we would, so the difference is what the bonus was paid off of.
Absolutely.
So that was the main purpose for this. All right, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilor Seth MacDowellson.
Yeah, so what if they don't meet their obligation, is there any ramification?
If they don't meet their obligations, which they never have, there is ramifications, obviously, I mean, it comes down to a legal question, they end up in breach of contract, and we would be having conversations with Ryan, but thankfully, we haven't ended up there, so.
Now, Councilor Seth MacDowellson, did you mean if they don't, they don't meet the, the incentive criteria?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean? Then, then they wouldn't get the bonuses, right?
The obligation under the qualitative and quantitative components, or there are other contractual obligations?
All contractual.
There's.
Contractual obligations.
It would become a legal conversation.
Okay. Okay, great.
I have a question.
Oh, Councilor.
So I know during the committee, we discussed this and agreed that we'd bring it up during the budget discussions.
Yes.
So who will come up with the metrics set, will that be O-V?
OVG 360.
360, or will it be park staff?
It's a combination, it's a, we work together to work on those, we look at previous numbers, future projections, what's currently on the books, it's not one-sided, and then we work with our finance department to bring those forth to city council.
And if council wanted to change those, is that possible, or is that not possible because of the contract?
They are open for discussion at the time that we bring them forth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilor Tran.
I move approval of the incentive fee and payment authorization as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion to second, is there any discussion? Or further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter of passing unanimously, thank you very much. All right, now, we've got Autumn for the next item, which is item D, the Federalway Community Center Locker Room, the Woodland Industries General Contracting Incorporated Change Order. We'll get a staff presentation from Autumn, and then we'll move forward. So Autumn?
Thank you, Mayor, council. My next item in front of you is the Federalway Community Center Locker Room, Woodland Industries General Contracting Incorporated Change Order. Woodland Industries, just for a little background, is our general contractor doing all of the demolition within the locker room spaces? The policy question before you is should the city council approve the proposed change order and authorize staff to execute it? Background is during demolition, which began on May 28th, Woodland Industries did have, find dry pack mortar setting bed underneath the tile instead of a concrete topping slab. The tri-pack mortar setting bed has caused issues such as water saturation and rotting of the gypsum wallboard, and ultimately does need to be removed. You can see some pictures here that show the rust and corrosion on some of our steel wall frames. As well as fire alarm conduit that has some damage. And then the picture on the bottom left here shows where they start to, started to take out some tile and ultimately ran into just sand below there instead of concrete, which is what halted our demolition process and began looking into what the next steps are. As we work forward with Woodland Industries and Enova and our project management, Team Rock Project Management, we determined that the only option was to remove all of the dry pack mortar that has either maintained, it's still wet under a lot of those areas, and cannot be, we can't get the tile up and then put something back over it, so all of it will need to come out, and we will need to do a new concrete topping slab on there. Here's some additional photos of the demo inside of those locker rooms. And then ultimately, as proposed, this change order is $43,529, and it will be funded from the ARPA funding under the existing Federalway Community Center Locker Room budget. There's no additional funds being requested. Our budget demo amount was $1,000, $176,130. The original contract amount that came in from Woodland Industries was $102,393, and this change order, $43,529, still leaves us under our budgeted amount, and our new contract amount will be $145,922. The options before you are to approve the proposed change order and authorize staff, or to not approve and provide staff direction, and the mayor's recommendation is option one. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Walsh.
Yeah, main question, what kind of time delay is this going to cause?
It caused a time delay in the demo, but it's not causing any time delay in regards to general construction, we had planned to start general construction in October, and we're still on that timeline.
Very good.
Councilor Hunter.
Thank you. I'm glad that we're not being asked for any more funding, because I don't know that there, that there is any more funding to put into this. Is there anything else that could possibly be needed? And I'm, I'm very serious in that, I know I asked that last time when there is a change order, so.
Yep.
What else could possibly go wrong in this, this small space?
Ultimately, as you peel the layers back, there, there is items that we were unaware of, it's one of the reasons why we moved forth with demo so quickly, and we ultimately found something that we weren't aware of. However, in both our construction budget and our demo budget, we've allowed for contingency for some of those potential surprises. Thankfully, demo's happening now, those surprises aren't going to come down the line. I can't say that we don't anticipate anything else happening, we're still finishing some of that demo, but the likelihood, I think, is slim, more slim than what we were at, but I can't make full promises. But what we see right now is, and even after we had a walkthrough with mechanical last week, we don't find anything else that should be a surprise.
Have the ceilings been torn into, I mean, we've looked up there.
Yep.
We've looked everywhere now.
Yes, everything has come out, including the ceiling tiles, we'd be happy to set up a tour if you guys wanted to walk through before, we really started ripping the tile out, because then it's going to be a little bit messy in there, and I'm happy to do that with any one of you if you want to see what we've sort of taken apart.
I would love to do that.
Absolutely.
As for the rest of the building, has a study been done on the rest of the building?
That study actually began yesterday, July 1st, and we should have it back by the end of the month, they began working with staff and teams on site to assess the entire facility which was requested.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilor McDaniel.
Yeah, kind of co-telling off, she said, thanks for not asking for more money, it's not in the budget already.
You're welcome.
The question I have is, the way you phrased it, as-built documentation, was this floor not built to the understanding that we had?
The understanding that we had is that should have been a concrete topping slab, and that's not what was found, so yes, as far as we know, it did not follow the specifications, but I don't have specific documents from construction to know why that change was made.
Okay, and it still went through, so no, theoretically, this should have been caught way back in the inspection or something?
It could have potentially been approved back then, I don't know, there might have been a change, and I just don't have that RFI in this documents from 2006 when it was built. We've gone back and looked. If there was a rhyme or reason as to why that change was made, that would be helpful, and not saying that it didn't pass inspection, it likely did, we just didn't know, that's what we were tearing into.
Gotcha. And then we're going to have to replace this with what was supposed to be there, so there is going to be an additional cost when that comes in, that was not part of the original budget, correct?
Correct, but we're showing that it still fits within our construction budget.
Okay. And then as she mentioned about the envelope, inspection, I think we were talking about, are we doing that with any other city-owned buildings? Mayor?
Not currently, there are other facilities that are going to be on the horizon for upgrades, Dewis Bay is kind of the next thing on the list, but we've come before the council to ask for improvements to the, to the Performing Arts Center, which was built very recently, so we're ongoing, making sure that we're keeping up. But in large-scale analysis of buildings, we don't have anything planned at this point, but we certainly will.
Yeah, I'd be curious if Parks ever wanted to take that up to have that conversation about maybe doing envelope studies on some of these assets. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President.
I'm not sure whether this accurate or not, but it would appear to me that the, probably a subcontractor for the contractor may have cut corners, in other words, not put cement instead of use the sand, and that happened with the state with some projects. So is there any way we can leave, you know, don't we have, when you have a contractor, don't you have some kind of a recommendation that follows that contractor as to whether they were responsive and responsible bidder? Isn't there some way we can make some kind of a comment about what happened to us shouldn't happen again to anybody else?
Right.
Generally, no, I mean, EJ, do you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, so I, there's a, there is a period initially when construction's complete, it's typically either two to, two or three years, depending on the value of the contractor, you can do exactly what you said. That would have expired in 2008 or 2009 for this building, though. So I think that the time has lapsed for us to be able to go back to the original contractor, although I certainly hear your point.
Yeah, it's, it, these people should not be allowed to get away with these kinds of things.
Yeah, and I mean, like Autumn said, it's, you know, it happened long ago, and there, the inspection reports from back then are, are not readily available, so whether this was something the city approved, or whether it's something the contractor did is a little unknown, too. So I, you know, where exactly to place blame is, is a little bit of a wild card in the subject.
Pretty frustrating, thank you.
Agreed.
Councilor Walsh.
Yeah, I'd say that let's use this as a lesson with the, with the maintenance facility, let's be very diligent in making sure that it's built the way it's supposed to be built.
Yeah, so we don't document projects in this manner anymore, we, we've moved to an interactive picture-based documenting system for all of our projects, so we have all of the files that have been constructed since, I think, 2018 is when we implemented that. So at this point, there are pictures and electronic logs and everything, there's daily reports for everything, to your point, we do have very exacting track records from all of our recently constructed projects. This predates that unfortunately, but that is the system we're using for the maintenance yard.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Autumn? When are we expecting the locker rooms to be completed?
Locker rooms are still planning to be opened May of 2025, construction to rebuild them will be October of this year.
Great. Okay. Councilor Walsh.
I move approval of the proposed change order.
Second.
It's been a motion to second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, a matter of passing unanimously, thank you very much, Autumn.
Thank you.
All right, item added, this is 9E Therapeutic Court Interagency Agreement, we have a presentation from Judge Dave Larson, who is remote. Judge Larson.
Thank you, thank you for adding this, as you can see, it was, we were advised just Thursday that, that AOC's, the administrative officer of the courts, is renewing our grant that we've had for about the last four years, and, and it expired, our contract with Pier Canton and with the state expired on Sunday. So thank you for adding this at the last minute so that we could get the necessary approval to move forward. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but what this does for us this year, it's a little bit different than other years, is gives us about $30,000 to hire a coordinator that can coordinate a lot of the things that we've not been able to coordinate with the bandwidth we've had in the past, so that'll be an added bonus this year. But other than that, it's just the peer navigators and the other good work that we're able to do because of the funds from the state.
Okay, council, any questions for Judge Larson?
I've got one.
Councilor McDaniel.
The only question I have is the treatment services that are on here, what, who do we send, or who do we send people to for treatment? Was it a group?
It's, that was a part of a program for domestic violence treatment, and we've used a lot of Matthews for that, along with Intercept, I believe, and we actually had that money cut from this year's budget because it wasn't as effective as we thought it'd be, so there wasn't as much money used, so that money was used now for the coordinator.
Thank you.
All right, all right, Council President Kouchmar.
Thank you, Mayor, I move.
I move to authorize the acceptance of grant funds awarded by AOC, which is the Administrative Office of Courts, and authorize the court, our court, to execute all related contracts to accept and spend the grant money.
Second.
It's been a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter of passing unanimously. Thank you, Judge Larson, for.
Thank you. I almost weighed in on the last topic because I was a construction litigation lawyer, so, but I, I decided to keep my mouth shut, so.
Love to hear your thoughts.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the statute, statute of repose, that's going to be the issue on a lot of the stuff. It's six years from substantial completion and you can't really bring any claims after that. So that's by statute. So it's basically the city's kind of out of luck.
All right. Okay, well, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, take it easy. Have a good one.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, bye-bye. Okay, now we're on to item ten, ordinances. This is the second reading in, for enactment. Item ten A, Council Bill eight-eight-zero ordinance, City of Tacoma Department of Public Utilities Tacoma Water Franchise. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill eight-eighty, ordinance, City of Tacoma Department of Public Utilities Tacoma Water Franchise, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington granting City of Tacoma Department of Public Utilities Water Division Tacoma Water, a non-exclusive franchise to occupy rights of way of the City of Federal Way, Washington within the specified franchise area for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, operating, replacing, and repairing a water distribution and transmission system within and through the City of Federal Way.
All right. Councilor Doby.
Yes, I move to approve the proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion to second for final approval and second reading. Uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, a passage unanimously. All right, now we're on to council reports. We'll start position number one. Councilmember Essefa Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just looking through my notes with, from the conference at AWC and there were so many great topics. And so something I'd like to say to you, Councilmember Honda, is that maybe some of those workshops could be repeated because we were not able, didn't have the opportunity to go to ones that we had missed. But there were some really good topics like the deep affordable housing and then there were some on fentanyl and I learned so much there. I, you know, how they really mimic and look like actual oxycodone or all the other things. So it was very, very informative. And then, of course, to hide up from the trip was my hair catching on fire, but hey. So anyway, thank you. And that's my before.
Worked so hard your hair caught on fire. Exactly. That's right. Very good. Okay. Uh, Councilor McDaniel.
Yeah, I found that event to actually be more, more informative for me than it was at the National League of Cities, so I really enjoyed it. I got to hang out with some small cities and hear what their problems were. I talked to some city managers. I listened to the relationship building between council, city managers, and administrative. It was pretty interesting and it was nice to kind of talk to people who were local to us in jurisdictions, so that's kind of nice. Other than that, the other big item for me is I'll be at the red, white, and blue festivities with a little booth, giving out some information on city council, city, and trying to talk to some local residents, see how they feel and what kind of concerns they have. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Honda.
Thank you. One of the items that I enjoyed at AWC was Vancouver homelessness response tour. It was a walking tour and then it ended up getting on a bus, thank goodness. It was like ninety degrees outside, very hot. But Vancouver spends at least, I want to say, a million dollars a year on their tiny home villages and they have, I believe, two, maybe three. And they're building more. They, they just, they just voted to spend more money on that. They also have a parking lot where they allow, um, a vehicle, car, small van to mortar homes to park there and they have services provided. And I, I, before you came, Keith, we did discuss having that here in Federal Way. There wasn't support for it. I know we need to do something in Federal Way. I'm not sure what we could do as compared to what Vancouver does because they do spend quite a bit of, of money on what, what they're doing. But they are bringing people out of homelessness, out of the tents. As Council President said, they're, they do monitor people for drug use and alcohol use. They're not kicked out immediately for, for drug use. They are helped along and if they can't show improvement and show growth, then they, they are asked to leave. But I thought that was a very interesting, um, very interesting. And what was most interesting was the improvement that they've made in the last, since we were there, what, two or three years ago in Vancouver? They've made quite a bit of improvement in how they treat their homeless folks and the services that they have for them. Also, I spent a lot of time with attorneys. I, I spent a lot of time with MRSC and then there was another session on sip and chat with attorneys on all things O P M A, P R A, and ethics. And that was fascinating to hear what's going on in other cities and the attorneys and how they answered some of those questions, always ending with ask your own city attorney, as expected. So I would say, Councilmember Essefa Dawson, the app for this, you can go on it and download all of this and that is going to be open, it, until next fall. Or longer. We're working on getting it open longer, but at this point it'll be open for, for a while. And so I was going to see if we could get some of the more, some of the ones that were more popular downloaded so that we can all have, you know, at least be able to read because they did only offer, they didn't have any of these things repeating and that was something that we all seemed to want. I'd like to thank the folks from the event on Saturday at Federal Way High School, Beauty of the, our African roots. It was our second event. We were there last year too. And I ran into the mayor and Councilmember Essefa Dawson. We had our little four-year-old grandson and we were able to watch some of the dancing and some of the talent that they had. And it, this year was bigger than last year and I expect next year it'll continue to grow. There was even a group from Spokane there that was dancing. So it's not just regional, it's statewide. I'd like to congratulate the police officers who received promotions and this evening, please stay safe, go home to your families after your shift. And the Kiwanis Salmon Bank. It is our sixty-eighth annual salmon bank, July twenty-sixth, which is a Friday from four to eight. We will quit serving around seven, so, um, be there before seven if you want a, a meal. It is thirty dollars for a regular dinner, thirty-five dollars the day of, and five dollars for a child's hot dog meal. We will have, most of our nonprofits in Federal Way will be there with booths that the Kiwanis Club allows them to be there free of charge to give information out. And we will have a band, we will have some auction items and, um, it'll be just a, a another wonderful salmon bake. And what I will say is that it has never rained on salmon bake day. The year that I co-chaired it a few years ago, it drizzled until four o'clock and then it stopped. And the sun came out, it was seventy-five degrees, it was awesome. So it doesn't rain, I expect to see everyone there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Tran.
Well, uh, today is my second day as a retiree.
Yay. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I feel great for the first time in, I don't even know how many years that I did not have to turn on my alarm in the morning. I have a long list of things that I have to do from now until summer, so I was joking with my wife that I said, um, maybe I should go back to work instead. But no, seriously, I, I really grateful to be able to retire early. And, uh, and no, I'm not sixty-five yet, I'm just taking my early retirement. So with that, I end my report.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Well-learned. All right, Councilor Walsh.
All right. First, just a few comments on the, the Association of Washington Cities Conference. I, I also think that it was very, very beneficial, learned a lot of things. A few of things, as, as was mentioned with the homeless, with the tiny villages and stuff like that. I thought it was very interesting what Vancouver's doing. I don't know whether it's, it was very informative. I don't know whether it's quite what we want to do here, but I, it was definitely worthwhile seeing what they're doing and, and I think that maybe we can garner some, some ideas and because we definitely do want to help those who have fallen into homelessness and, and especially provide services for them. And so, so it was enlightening to see different approaches and, and I think that we can take that and, and, and move forward and try to figure out what best suits us here in, in Federal Way. The, uh, the inclusive part that, that Susan mentioned, fantastic place. And I, I think that, that we should really talk to the, the, to the, the designer of it and see how that could fit in and then see if we can, I, we don't have the budget to, to do what they did, but they did it without much of a budget because they, they got donations, they got grants and, you know, sold bricks, things, a variety of different things, a, a great community fundraising thing. And it's, one thing that I thought was interesting, it's inclusive, but it is really made for all abilities. Whether there's a kid in a wheelchair able to go on a swing or a fully capable kid able to do other things, I mean, it's, it, it works for everyone and it was a delightful, beautiful place. And, and I think that we should closely take a look at it. I, I, I mentioned the mayor earlier that, that AWC does scholarships for high school seniors each year and I, and I think we need to make sure that we're participating in that and helping some Federal Way kids have the opportunity to, to have that scholarship. Some of the, the classes, or the, the sessions were there was, there were some on how to, you know, when there's a contentious, contentious city council, how to get along with each other. And I, I, I didn't go to those because I really appreciate the cooperation that we have on the city council. And I think that, I very strongly believe that you can disagree without being disagreeable. And, and I think that we, we do a, a good job on that. And I want to compliment all of my associates here on the city council that, that when we do have disagreements, we, we don't take it personally, that we cooperate, that we work together. And the same with, with staff and, and with, with everyone else, that, that I, I think that, that one of the most important things, disagreement is fine, but we don't need to be disagreeable. Lastly, bringing things right here close to home, coming up on, oh, boy, what is it? In, in three Saturdays, uh, I had this up here. July twenty-seventh, the, uh, one of the great organizations in the city, We Love Our City, is having a bike safety event. And it's going to be across the freeway, the, the Family Life Center, which is in the old Tevita Building, and going to have bike safety, a bike rodeo with safety course, a free helmet giveaway, uh, safety checks for bikes, repair stations, uh, just a number of, of different things. And, and I, you know, that we should let the community know about that. And, and, anyway, that they're providing a great service. And with that, I believe that that is my report. I, I look forward to red, white, and blues. It's a great, Federal Way has one of the greatest fireworks displays in the whole area. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Councilor Doby.
I don't have much report, other than I'm looking forward to how the council works together and we kind of craft what the Supreme Court decided on how we can help the homeless issue. We got some, maybe some tools we didn't know we had that we can get creative with and help get people into treatment like we heard from the, from the dais and look forward to seeing everybody at the fourth. And this coming weekend, my grandkids from Amon Jordan will be here for the last couple days before they leave for a year, so I'll be pretty tied up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council President, Coach Mark.
Well, I, I just want to mention that we're talking about Vancouver, Washington. I grew up in the Portland, Oregon area, which is right across the river. And Vancouver is over a hundred years old. And so when you talk about the things that they're doing in relation to what we're doing, they have a whole lot more, many years of being able to build their budget. We're just really, at thirty years old, still a city trying to get our footing and get our buildings in place and fix our roads and get our regulations in order. So, so we've got a ways to go yet, but we're, we're doing extremely well. And thank you, Councilmember Walsh, for your comments on how our council works together. And I think not only do we benefit personally, but the community benefits from that. And so that's, that's a wonderful thing. So, and I am looking for, are we going to have drones at the Fourth of July? Drone fireworks?
Chief?
No? Darn.
Des Moines is.
Des Moines is, okay.
Oh, you know, no, you mean for the, for the show.
For the show, yeah. Oh, darn.
No, no, it's, it's old-fashioned. You're going to feel the, the debris raining down.
Yeah, there you go.
Last year it was pelting me in the face.
Yeah, the planes going through the fireworks. Yeah, there you go. So, um, but stay safe, have a wonderful Fourth of July and remember, you know, we're all here together, let's help each other. Thank you.
Here, here. Uh, council, I think we take the stage at about seven o'clock on the fourth. And we're going to have a great celebration. Great job, um, tonight and have a great week, have a very happy and safe Fourth of July, everyone. We're adjourned.